I now call to order the September 18th, 2023, meeting of the New Caney Independent School District Board of Trustees at 6:00 PM. At the minute show that a forum is present with all members in attendance. Please rise for the invocation to be given by Mr. Mixon and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance and honor the Texas flag to be led by Mrs. Sharp.
The flag of the United States of America, through the Republic of which we stand, my nation and God, if invisible, to repeat and to serve. Honor the Texas flag, and let belief into thee, our state and your God.
Item two on the agenda is recognitions presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir.
Those will actually start next month.
Okay, good deal.
Item three on the agenda is consideration of out-of-state trip for New Caney High School Dance presented by Mr. Powell.
Good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for giving me a chance to talk with you tonight regarding an upcoming out-of-state trip for our award-winning Blue Bonnet Dance and Break Dance teams. The trip we are presenting for your consideration will be to New York City, February 15th through 18th, 2024. The team will fly out on the 15th and will attend a Broadway Dance Clinic taught by a cast member from a Broadway production. The team will also see Lion King on Broadway and see several other New York City landmarks, including the 9/11 Museum, Radio City Music Hall, and Central Park. The trip will cost approximately $2,000 to $2,700 for each student who chooses to attend. Cost changes if they choose to stay, you know, in a double room or a quad room. That's why there's that differentiation there. Parents pay for these expenses. We will have a male and a female chaperone attend the trip, and the number of chaperones we have attend will go up as we have students sign up for that trip. Parents are also able to become district-approved volunteers and come along on the trip as chaperones. I've traveled with the Blue Bonnets a couple of times, went with them to Los Angeles one time. Ms. Crackle does a good job of taking care of the details. And so that's consideration. You guys have any questions? Yes, ma'am. So this is, Ms. Crackle does an in-state trip and an out-of-state trip. She does an in-state trip every other year and an out-of-state trip every other year, just to give her kids that experience. And so she presents it and the parents, you know, parents do pay for that and they pay for it in installments. And so as soon as she gets approval from the board, she's going to present this to parents.
Motion been moved and seconded. There being no further discussion, the vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Item four on the agenda is open forum. The board will now hear from comments from those persons who have signed up to speak. We have three people. I'm going to read the open forum statement first. "The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as representative of a group may do so at this time. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than five minutes. Remember, the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. If an issue mentioned is listed on tonight's agenda, the board will defer discussion until the appropriate time during this meeting. In addition, the board has adopted complaint policies that are designed to secure at the lowest administrative level a prompt and equitable resolution of complaints and concerns. The policies are available on the district website, www.nucanyisd.org." First up is Mr. Austin Pullman.
Pullman. All right. Joe, keep your time.
Good evening. Firstly, I like to express my gratitude for the time and effort the board and the education staff take their time to invest in shaping the future of our children. As a concerned parent, I would like to seek clarification regarding the recently implemented no homework policy. Could you please elucidate the rationale behind this significant change? Were any particular studies or educational theories considered in the formulation of this new policy? If so, would you be able to share those resources with me? I understand that homework can sometimes be a burden, particularly for families who have not, maybe don't have the time or the resources to support their children adequately in this respect. However, do we believe that this new policy will adequately prepare students for future endeavors, such as college exams or certifications that they may have to take after high school, where independent study skills are crucial? Thank you for considering my questions. I look forward to understanding the thought process behind this decision and how it aims to best serve the educational needs of our children.
Thank you, sir. Up next is Mr. Doug Wingate.
Hello, and thank you for letting me speak. My name is Doug Wingate. I live in Tavola. I am interested to find out if the New Caney ISD has a hazardous response. Person that is overall responsible for making hazardous weather calls? Because Friday afternoon, your vice principals at Tavola Elementary cut loose children who were walkers and there was running and screaming children throughout the neighborhood, running from thunderstorms. I do believe that New Caney ISD should have one person that's overall responsible to make weather decisions and tell principals and vice principals whether or not it is safe for children to walk home in a thunderstorm. You're leaving this policy to local principals and vice principals, and they put the children at risk on Friday. You are directly responsible for that danger. And you're very lucky that children did not get hit, struck by lightning, or, you know, anything else happened to them. I spent 20 years as an airline pilot. Hazardous weather is very dangerous, and you put all those children at risk. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Up next is Ms. Laura Hanson.
Hi, I'm Laura Hanson. I'm the president of EMC Eels, and these are some of the other board members. I'll let them introduce themselves.
My name is Brittany Hughes, and I'm the treasurer, and I've been on the team for four years.
My name is Melanie Young, and I do computers, and I've been on the team for three years.
I'm Allison Schaefer. I'm the activities coordinator, and this is our third season on the team as well.
My name is Holly Gino, and I'm over sponsorships for the team, and I've been on the board for the whole time. Five years or so.
The whole time. So for some of you that have been on the board, you probably recognize me and know that I try to come every year and give a thank you because if it wasn't for New Caney ISD and the partnership with us, we would not have a team. So Mr. Holly and Mr. Farmer now do work with us and with all of our craziness because we have a big team and make it possible for us to use the facility across the way. So I always give like a little update for you guys because I know you really want to hear how great of a season we had. So this year we were down on swimmers, but that was okay. We went down to 185, and 185 is still a lot. So I was quite fine with that number. We had five coaches, and four of the five coaches actually were New Caney ISD graduates and swimmers. So, and they, four of the five actually were former Eels as well. So they were able to start the team, be junior coaches, graduates, and all that, and now be part of our swim team. And they have, you know, even records on the board over there. So that was really cool for the kids to see that connection. As far as our team, our team did so good this year. It was just, it was awesome to see. We had 311 new top 10 times this year. I mean, the kids really, they just grew so much. We went to a competition called Summer Heat. We got second place out of medium teams, and we got a high point earner for seven, eight boys and for the 600 girls, Ms. Schaefer's kids, actually. And then as far as divisionals goes, we hosted for, again, this year, and that is a big undertaking. If you've ever been here on divisionals, it's a lot. It's six teams together, and it's probably, if not the same size of the regionals or divisionals that they sent here. We probably have more people here at divisionals. It's that big of an event. But with the coordination with Mr. Holly and Mr. Farmer, it worked out good. And we got second place at divisionals, which was fine because the first-place team came from like a higher division. And so, you know, it is what it is. But second place was awesome to get. Then we went, after that, we had 94, about half of our team actually qualified to go to the events after the season, which is a great undertaking, and we got third place for medium teams there. And we're still making a name for ourselves. So we go to the woodlands and we're swimming, and they're like, where's this team? Where y'all at? You know, where do y'all swim? And so we proudly get to say that New Caney ISD allows us to use the natatorium, and we're very lucky for that. And then we had 18 kids go to Ponderosa. And if you know anything about swim, Ponderosa is like super hard to get to. And we had 18 kids make it there, which is awesome. And one of our little girls actually was the high point earner for her age bracket. And so, and getting our name out there.
She broke the record.
Oh, yeah. And she, yeah, she set the record for Ponderosa, too. So that was awesome. And then one thing that I think is great is we have a connection with Nihah, which is the year-round swim team as well. And we've got people that are also board members and affiliates of that as well. So we like tag team and say, okay, if you really love swim, go do the year-round program with Nihah. And I looked at their roster today, and half the swimmers on their team is actually our Eel swimmers as well. So it's building this program in this community and trying to make a stronger swim program for the district. So thank you. We thank you because if we didn't have the natatorium, we wouldn't have a program. So we appreciate all the support and help.
You're very welcome.
Anything else, ladies?
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Now, item five on the agenda is superintendent's report presented by Mr. Calvert.
Yes, sir. I'd like to recognize Ms. Jenny Good and Andrew Krueger. They're going to give us an accountability update, an accountability and an assessment update. Accountability has been in the news here a lot recently. And so while we definitely acknowledge there's a system out there, not the greatest in the world as far as painting an accurate picture of remotely what happens on our campuses daily or annually. And so we're all very well aware of that. So I've asked Ms. Good just to kind of talk to you a little bit about that, what's out there, what we know, what we don't know. But also highlight some of the data from our district from this past year about the growth that just showcases the amazing work that our teachers are doing every day in our district. So Ms. Good is all your...
Well, thank you. It's nice to be with you here. I'm Jenny Good. I'm the director of accountability and assessment. This is my sixth year in the district and my 28th year in education. And Andrew Krueger is my teammate, and we are a team of two. And Andrew is 17 years in education and 15 of those all in New Caney ISD. And he's been a teacher, a coach, an assistant principal, lots of different things. But he's doing a great job for us on our team. So you do have slides in front of you. Went ahead and printed some out for you. And so we wanted to go over a little bit first of the star changes. We talked about it a little bit last spring. We had, we knew there were some different things going on timeline and all like that. So the very first one is this page, and it talks about what third graders had to do. We talked about that in the spring. That little QR code on there takes you to a couple of things, some questions and things that we're going to show you. The next slide, let's see, I guess I'm supposed to be moving this, huh? There we go. I didn't know I was, it was a do-it-yourselfer tonight. So the next slide is about something that we learned. This was the first year that all grades, third through English II, had to write, and not just English II, all the way through U.S. History in 11th grade because we were writing also in Science and Social Studies. But this one, this slide represents what we did in Reading Language Arts. And ECR is for Extended Constructed Response. So it's the longer response, and it's response to writing, I mean, to reading. So you have to read first and then you write. And so if you'll notice that, these are state averages. And you have a possible, a possibility of getting 10 points. You're graded by two people, and each person can give you up to five points. Notice across the state that we were well below five points. We were 10 points. We were, 4.72 was the highest. And then down here in elementary school, third graders, 2.53, fourth graders, 2.71. So out of 10 points, we left a lot on the table. Part of that was because it was brand-new. They gave us rubrics, but really didn't tell us how to grade them. And so Andrew's got some things he's going to share with you. One of them is a writing sample from third grade. And I want you to kind of look at those because the grades don't make any sense unless you know exactly what those students were trying to do. So this is a third-grade passage, and it's called a paired passage. And so they have to read two different pieces of material. Then they answer a number of questions, and you can see, you can see on there that they answered like five or six questions. And then the last one is the Extended Constructed Response. It asks for them to, it's an argumentative piece of writing, and they're supposed to state their opinion. They do all this lovely writing, and if you didn't include things like, "it is my opinion," or "I believe," you didn't get points. And so that's what, and that's what third graders had to do. We also learned this year that those extended constructive response, even in middle school and high school where it can be lengthy, what they've written, the graders had 90 seconds to read them. And so TEA graders read them in 90 seconds and gave a grade of five, five points for different things that they were looking at, based on the rubric that they gave all of us. So looking at that information, it kind of puts in context what we've got on the wall over there about how students maybe didn't do as well as we thought. The good thing about it is we did get some pictures back of all the writing that was done, and we could see what they were looking for that could get a kid a 10 and what, what some students who maybe only got a two, what they were able to do. And so we can build on that to help our students be more efficient writers. It's, it's really writing towards a set of points, though. It's not writing for writing's sake. It's writing for a goal of, of points. So I just thought that was interesting for y'all and that maybe you would want to look at some of the things they did. We also have math ones, and you can go ahead and give them the scores, too, Andrew. We also have a set of math ones. Now, this is a really quick game of, are you smarter than a fifth grader? Remember, all these are taken online. They do have scratch paper where they can write and work things out. I like to write and make marks on mine and work things out. But the fifth grade, if you look at that, they're asking, the very first question they're asking, only 20% of the students in the state got that, got that one right on the math one. So it really is about having an equation builder. Remember last year, I told you as we were building this, there were a lot of things going on with the system, and they were adding things all through the year, grid paper and things, little devices and things inside that online program that students could use for the test. Some of them weren't added until like March. And so we learned across the state that we need to give our kids more practice in equation writing. So lots of times you'll have, you know, you've got to do the pluses and the numbers in. It'll have pluses and minuses or whatever, and you've got to do the numbers in. This one, you had to actually put the equation in it to make the answer correct and to match the problem that they had. So I just wanted you to have a couple of examples there of things that students were asked to do. It just, it's very different than what we were doing before.
This reading selection that you give us, this comes from the state. This is a star question.
Yes, that's directly off the star.
I'm shocked because, I mean, just like skimming through it, I see strong messages of propaganda in here that I'm surprised come from the state.
Well, that's directly off the state side, yes.
We're using San Francisco, California as a gold standard.
Well, it's about recycling, so they are big recyclers, yes, for sure.
All right. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So this is a reminder, this is also a slide in there that tells you about the special kinds of questions that we had. We had lots of different question types and by subjects which ones those were. One of the sheets, that's the colored sheet that I put up there, that's a spreadsheet. That's our star scores for 22 and 23. I also put the state scores out there. We're required to report those to you every year. In this slide that you have access to electronically, you can click any one of those. And I have them broken out by every elementary school, middle school, high school, and then our overall district scores. If you look at the color coding, you can see that third-grade reading has the same color as fourth grade. Third grade in 22 has the same color as fourth grade in 23. So you can see as a cohort how students did, and you're going to see a lot of growth in there. So just that basic data shows a lot of growth. Some notable things that happened in our star were some of our campuses that performed very high. One of them, of course, is our Infinity Early College High School. They had, they had very good star performance. You know, they're working on, all the kids are working on TSI-ready, college-ready. And so they have, they always have very good star scores and represent us very well. Another notable one is West Fork High School. They had, they had really high star scores. They had one grade level, but that grade level takes most of the tests. And so they did an excellent job preparing their students and working at a high level. And then Ben's Branch Elementary was our elementary school that performed the highest. Greatest growth on star, Infinity and West Fork, and Ben's Branch are there again, but also Brookwood Forest, and they have one of our highest economically disadvantaged groups, as well as Sorders Mill. They both did a great job on getting their students to grow at least a year. So some examples of local data. We give our students screeners in elementary school all the way through eighth grade and to just see how they grew. Are they ready when they get here? How do they do during the year? And how do they do at the end? And these are trend reports that we get from there. This one is a reading one. And as you can see, at second grade, you can see that the green means we're in good shape. Yellow means we may need a little help. Red means we need extra help. And so as you see them move out throughout the year, your green grows and your yellow gets a lot smaller. And you can tell that in third grade. And notice they start a little higher in third grade overall. And then when you get to fourth grade, looks even better. The end of fourth grade looks great. And then by fifth grade, we're doing, it really looks like what it should look like for students who are struggling and students who maybe need that third-tier instruction. That's the reading. You see the same thing echoed in the math. So the longer we hold our students and the more interaction we have with them, the better they do on growing. These are a little, few slides from the state, something that the commissioner put out. And I want to just note that the first one is third through eighth grade, and it compares economically disadvantaged students to not economically disadvantaged students. And you can see the color coding on the bottom there that shows you math, reading, science, and social studies. And just note how much difference there is in third through eighth grade between how students who are economically disadvantaged across the state perform compared to those who are not economically disadvantaged. Yes.
That's how we put, not we, the state puts.
That's how the state puts that, yes. That's how they classify them. That's exactly right. And then the other one, the next one is our high school. It's the same way. It's, it's a little bit different, but you can still see that students who are non-economically disadvantaged far outperform students who struggle to have the right resources and just, you know, be at school and have food and all of those things. One of the things we're going to talk about a little bit, I showed you this before. I just wanted to make a couple of notes about it. This is the accountability timeline. We still don't have an accountability manual. All our scores are here, but we don't know how they're going to grade us yet. So it was due, this one says in August. It did not come. And then last week, we got word that it may be November before we get an accountability manual, and they fixed the parts of accountability that are not quite equitable, particularly for students who are economically disadvantaged. The accountability timeline, well, let's talk about this one first. See the blue line? It says standard setting. Remember, after we took our test and were finished in May, they took June and July to decide what the cut scores were, whether students passed or not, and whether they hit approaches or meets or masters. So they, they took some time to do that. And so now we're awaiting our A through F scores. This is the new timeline. It says late October, accountability finalized. Early November, accountability rating sent to the district. And they're not sure when they're going to release them to the public, but soon after they give them to the district. We get them about two days before they go public on txschools.gov. So that's an update on what we know so far. I did list in this one, it's accountability changes. We talked about that a little bit. Your star performance standards, I linked them in this report. So that underlined piece, if you want to see what the performance standards were for each grade level and each subject, you can just click right there and it'll take you to it. Remember that our CCMR, College Career Military Readiness Target, increased from 28 points to get an A. Used to, could get it at 60, now it's 88. Student progress domain was changed. Closing the gaps, which is domain three, was changed, and our district score calculation changed due to waiting. Now, here's a little bit of, it's a guess. We're pretty good at guessing based on the manual that they've published. The last one they published was in May. And they've many, they've made a lot of updates about score cuts and all of those things, but they haven't fully published anything since May. And so notice there that our domain one scores changed very little. And in domain one, they, they count up how many approaches, kids who reach approaches, meets, and masters on their test. So they passed it, they're on grade level, they're at or above grade level. And they divide that by three. They add them up, divide them by three. That changed very little for our district. However, our calculation, due to a calculation change in domain two, which is growth, we dropped 14 points. And that's fairly average across the state. 2B is also about growth, but it's based on domain one, so that stayed stable. And then the next one is domain three, where they measure only four groups. We moved from 16 groups to four groups. And two of the, at least two of those groups are an all-student group and a high-focus group. And if you're economically disadvantaged, whatever your percent is, they're in the high-focus group, along with every sped student and every EB student, those that are monitored, every homeless and foster child, and every highly mobile student are in there. And then overall, you can see that that domain three went down 16 points, and our district change overall went down 10. And that's what we see across the state happening to schools that are highly economically disadvantaged. Here's an example of what, and it's probably going to be easier for you to look at it. That's one of the reasons we gave you your sheet. The way that they're breaking down domain three now, I put some arrows on there for you. So this is a campus in our district that had 833 tests. Notice it says total tests. So if you're, if you've got multiple grades in there, so like, let's say it's a middle school. You would take two sixth-grade tests, two seventh-grade tests, but four eighth-grade tests. So a student would be represented multiple times. And then the two middle arrows are the two student groups that the state picked for us because they were our lowest performing in 2022. And then the final one is our high-focus group. So if you look at high focus and you look at all students, you can see that those numbers are very close because this campus is highly economically disadvantaged. It makes it very difficult with these two changes for people who have campuses that are highly economically disadvantaged to score well. The next thing we have is a what-if. We showed you these the other day. This is a better guess for what-if, but remember, the one on 23 is still based on the May accountability manual because none has been published. But what we did is we took the scores from 23 and put them in the 22 category. If, if we scored this in 23 and put the exact same information in 22, you can see that the outcome was very different. So there are a couple of things that the state's looking at right now. Accountability changes. The one on the left, there's really not any change to the way they calculated it, but they're going to change, this is their, their matrix for how we get an A, B, C, or D in domain two. And what we were told is that they're likely to change not just the cut points, but all of the scaling conversions. They're trying to make it equitable. You know, then 2022, our scores, our growth scores were really high because we had 2021, which was that remote year, right? Blended remote year. And so they were really high. And so they gave us cut scores this year that were a lot lower than that so that kids would pass. And so you basically get a negative correlation with that, and it's very hard to figure out how growth would happen. They also took away the progress measure, and we only have the growth measure with a transition table. So a lot harder calculation. So they're taking another look at that. So a lot harder calculation, so they're taking another look at that. And then this last one is our domain three score. And this is where we went from 16 groups that were being measured to a target for that group. And it varied, the target varied from group to group. And now what they've done is cut it down to the four and we showed you the different ones that were on the, the sheet with the arrows. But basically what they want to do now is revisit these targets in the growth because they saw that it didn't work, not only in the growth area, but it affects because it's half of your, the 30% in your domain three. It's half of your domain three score. So they're relooking at both of those. They have to relook at them and then they're going to send it off to the, to the department, the U.S. Department of Education because they have to approve it. And that's what's going to take us probably about six weeks to finally get our scores. The only thing I would say to you is I go to campuses and our team goes to campuses all the time. We saw what they did in campuses this year. They worked hard. They not only worked hard, they worked smart. And you can see from our other data besides this star data and this accountability system that our kids grew and they grew well. And just so when you see all of this, we're happy to take any kind of accountability you give us, right? But I want you to know that some of it is not reflective of what these people did every day in the classrooms and in the hallways and keeping kids, you know, while keeping kids safe and, and making sure that all the things on the school were taken care of. I appreciate a little time today for letting me kind of go over this with you. Do you have any questions for me? Glad to. Okay, thank you. Okay, yes. Yes, you have your scores. And then your scores are also linked on the page. So I've given you the district overall score. We got them on August the 11th. So that's the district one. And then you've got a page in here that's linked and it has every star score on it. So all you have to do is hit those links and it'll take you where you can see every elementary and like that. They're also posted, this one gives you a link to every one that you have. So if you want to look by campus, you can look that way. Okay? Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Calvert. Thank you, board members.
Item six on the agenda is reports and proposals by board members.
News to develop swimmers that come into our district. We only have these facilities because the taxpayers here allow us to use them. So I'm really happy when I can't find a place to park because there are kids here swimming. I think that's great to see our facilities used by the community. So thank you for that. And I also wanted to mention that next week is our Tasbi Delegate Assembly. I think there's a lot of misinformation about what Tasbi does and doesn't do. This is our opportunity for every district in the state to have a say so in the legislative priorities and in the agenda of Tasbi for the year. So it's really exciting time to see all 600 plus school districts have a representative there and set the policy goals for the organization. And, you know, Austin ISD may have different priorities from New Caney ISD. We definitely do, but that's all balanced through the delegate assembly process. So I'm excited to be there in my Tasbi role and then Craig as our delegate as well. So I think that should be a good week for us and look forward to bringing back some feedback from what's going to be happening with our state organization there. The Texas Association of School Boards. It is a member service organization that provides products and services to school districts across the state. Thank you for that. Yes, that's all I have.
Item seven on the agenda is the consent calendar consisting of consideration of minutes, consideration of financial reports, consideration of purchasing reports, consideration of personnel reports, consideration of instructional items and consideration of safe and secure audit summary. Any questions? Further discussion? Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent calendar? Motion has been moved as second. No further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Item eight on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting under the authority of government code 551.074 for the purpose of personnel matters, government code 551.071 for attorney consultation and government code 551.076 for deliberation regarding the purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property. Any action as a result of closed session discussion will take place after the board reconvenes an open meeting. Time is 6:35 PM. The board ended its closed meeting at 7:53 PM and will now reconvene in open session. Item nine on the agenda is consideration to rescind selection of Arcatus for architectural services for New Caney Elementary School project, a replacement project presented by Mr. Byas.
Good evening. Yes, this motion is to rescind the Arcatus and it was based on an evaluation on what would be, provide the best services for the district. So we would like to rescind their, that architect firm for New Caney on future projects.
Any questions? Is there a motion to approve rescinding selection of Arcatus for architectural services for New Caney Elementary Replacement Project? Abol. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. Or the motion, motion has been moved as second. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Item 10 on the agenda is consideration of approval of selection and agreement with BRW Architects for architectural services for the New Caney Elementary School Replacement Project presented by Mr. Byas.
Yes, we approached BRW as the architect and engaged them in doing some reviews for the elementary schools and we'd like to engage them and hire them. They were vetted on the board that was previously approved and we would like to pursue them and have them go ahead and design and develop our next elementary schools.
Questions? Is there a motion to approve the selection and agreement with BRW Architects for the architectural services for the New Caney Elementary School Replacement Project? The motion has been moved as second. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. Item 11 on the agenda is consideration of approval of delegating authority to the superintendent or his designated to negotiate, finalize and execute GMP amendment and construction managers of Southeast Texas Incorporated for the construction of New Caney High School Phase One Extracurricular Facilities presented by Mr. Byas.
Yes, we have the GMP coming in and it was coming in literally on Wednesday. So we wanted to go ahead and get this in the agenda for today instead of losing the next month so we could get this approved. And obviously when we receive it should be the end of the closed business on Wednesday. We'll bring it forward on Thursday to Mr. Calvert so he can review it and we can go ahead and negotiate, vet it down and approve that for GMP Phase One.
Just so we're clear on the New Caney High School work. Phase one, we, we divided that project up into three phases. Phase one is the baseball and softball work. That is to the north of Eagle Drive. Phase two is CTE facility, again, to the north of Eagle Drive. And then phase three is the fieldhouse and field that is on the south side of New Caney High School. So when you hear phases, phase one, baseball, softball. Two, CTE. Three, football field, track and fieldhouse on the south side of New Caney High School.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve delegating authority to the superintendent or his designated to negotiate, finalize and execute GMP amendment and construction manager, managers of Southeast Texas Incorporated for the construction of New Caney High School Phase One Extracurricular Facilities? Motion has been moved as second. There being no further discussion of vote will be taken. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion is approved. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned. The time is 7:57.